Okay, the time is seven o'clock, so I'll call our regular meeting for March 12th, 2020 to order. Turn it over to Commissioner Headland, lead us in the vacation.
Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for updating Sir Lawrence. I guess as he helped me, especially hard time through this coronavirus, make sure that if he has to test either lead that, we'll try to keep this after our, we need your help. We ask us all the changes that you can.
Amen. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve? All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries, agenda is approved. Item number three is the recognition of Faith Baptist Church for contributions to the town of Youngsville.
Good evening. First off, I want to say thank you to Faith Baptist Church and the members and staff that are with us tonight. Thanks to their generosity of providing us with the gym and helping us grow our program. This past season, we were able to set new records for participants in our basketball league and help serve our growing community better. Through this partnership, we were able to conduct one of the smoothest basketball seasons that I've been a part of, and I look forward to continuing this partnership moving forward. I would like to recognize Stephen Wade, Megan Chadwick, Evan West, Ben McRoy, and Patrick Kotrell for all their support and help during this season, including setting up the gym every day, moving of equipment, anything and everything you could imagine they were there and very supportive this season. Finally, I would like to ask Aubrey Cooper to join me at the podium, so we may recognize him for his contributions this past season. When Aubrey first pitched this idea to me back in the fall, I knew there were going to be quite a few growing pains associated with the drastic increase in participants. The last thing that he told me that day that really stuck with me was, "We're going to be here for you and support you and the town in any capacity that we can." And in my opinion, he certainly stuck by that comment throughout each step. Regardless of what I needed, he was there. Over the last six months, in many meetings, observing practices and games, one thing was consistent: Aubrey Cooper was always there, ready to help and make a difference. For this, I personally thank you, and the town of Youngsville thanks you. And I would like to present Aubrey Cooper with this Youngsville Parks and Rec official jacket.
So does this make me official part of the team now?
You're part of our team now.
Speech, speech. I didn't say preach, I said speech.
You know. First of all, thank you, Andrew. We're so excited to be partnered with the town and other organizations just to better serve our community. We really believe when we work together, we serve the people of Youngsville and our community better. We're excited about what Andrew and the Parks Recreation Department is doing. We're excited about all those kids and those families that are coming through both of those gyms, and just excitement on their faces, and everything is happening. And our prayer is that the growth we saw this year is nothing compared to what you're going to see in years to come. So with that said, Andrew and I have been talking about this for a while, but we just want to officially extend that, you know, partnership next year for the use of our gym, and hoping that you're going to have to think outside of the box where you're going to play games and schedule games and everything yet. So thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Phil, for all that y'all have done to support this great town. We're going to continue to pray to you guys for wisdom and your leadership as you go forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, next on the agenda is citizens' comments. If we have any citizens who would like to comment, I will yield, and you have the floor. You can, do you want to speak from there? Do you want the podium? That way everybody can see.
I just wanted to thank you for helping us out there. There just helped so much. The woman across the street, she's a pretty girl, and she had to draw up, not the other students now, that she couldn't even afford. The only problem is when people come down the street now, and you find this road goes side on way at five, they have to turn around, come up, they make a left on the seventh, and then they make a left on the ninth. It's a broken one that you're coming over. So they're not stopping to need that left turn off, but they're trying to let somebody know. But we really appreciate that they're looking for so much, and so not all that traffic going down the street, why?
Sure. Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other citizens' comments?
Hello, my name is Brian Whitley. I'm one of the owners of the Victorian, right across the street. I wanted to come today really to introduce myself and kind of start a conversation. I know I reached out, I spoke with a few of you already, and I really appreciate your time. But a couple concerns when it comes to the sound ordinances that we have here in town. There's a few things that I was hoping we could revise, and I'm currently working, spoke with Emily earlier today. Thank you for your timely response. Very quick, that was awesome. But hoping to get on the agenda for next month. But I did want to stop by today and kind of ask if there's anything you would like to see from me to support, I guess, what I would like to see changed, mainly when it comes to amplified sound, the cutoff time of 9:00 PM, and the limitation to 20 hours per year per location. From what I've heard, one of those rules doesn't really get followed as of now, so maybe having it removed would be nice. But yeah, any comments or questions from y'all would really be appreciated.
When did you want to extend it until? So right now it's cut off at nine, correct?
Yes. Hi, Kat. Good to meet you.
So right now it's nine o'clock, right? And so you wanted to extend it until?
I'm not pushing for a lot. Right now, I'm open to the idea of either 10 or 11, and maybe just doing it on the weekends, just so we're not completely changing everything. But I think small steps in the right direction, I think it'll really help the economy around here, as well as small businesses, and kind of entice more people to come to town.
Yeah, and primarily, the business that you're in is hosting events, hosting weddings, and things of that nature. So it's more along the lines of a special events type of an issue anyway, right? Okay. Yeah, I know you and I have met and spoken before, and I think you've spoken with Phil and Chief Whitley as well. You know, clearly, I mean, I'm supportive of it. I think the problem that we kind of run into is that, as I've alluded to you before in the past, there was a reason why it was written that way. And I think as the town continues to grow and change a little bit, I think it's suitable for us as a board to take a look at those older restrictions that were in place, and then maybe adjust or revise as we see fit. So from a standpoint of what you guys need to bring, as far as a presentation goes, I don't know what the Commissioners would want to see, you know, as it pertains to that, but I don't know. Phil, do you have anything to add?
I think, I just had to reset the batteries. I think if we had another meeting, or you could meet with staff, whether it's Emily or Chief, to just give the Board a better idea about what you're asking for, which I think we're kind of clear on, and then the total number of rentals, you know, or events that you're going to be hosting in an entire year, just to give them a concept for, you know, the true ask, I think would be very helpful. So just like total number of rentals that you anticipate for this upcoming year, for example, because I know that we're kind of getting on that season, right, as the weather warms up, people want to get married and do those types of things. And then maybe if we were to extend, or the Board was to extend the hours, then what that would mean to you as a business, you know, whether it's holding additional events, additional revenue, how that would impact you, I think that would be very helpful. Does that give you at least a?
Yeah, absolutely.
You can get that stuff together, and just email me or Emily, or, you know, both of us, and review it. So that way the Board has a good, you know, concise set of data to look at.
And I do plan on having all the people I've spoke to, I know Brandon's here tonight with his wife, thank you, in support of this decision as well. So it wouldn't just be beneficial to myself, but a lot of other businesses in our community can definitely, definitely help.
Sure thing.
Yep, absolutely. I think before, so as we take a similar approach to public engagement that we took to closing Nassau, and that if we were going to propose, you know, amending the ordinance to change the hours, then we would let citizens know in advance, we'd hold a public hearing, we'd, you know, put door hangers on all the people that live nearby that are affected, so they had an opportunity to publicly comment. So that way you, you as decision makers, have all the information that you need to weigh in. Yep, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Whitley? Anything else from us?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any additional citizens' comments? All right, hearing none, we'll move along into the financial report. I don't see our finance group, so I think that's you, Mr. Cordero.
That's me for now. I don't have anything noteworthy. Everything is going as according to plan. I think we're great financially, the budget amendment is very straightforward. I'm happy to entertain any questions, but I think that we're executing the budget in a very responsible manner. Sure. So the general fund is, so basically what we're doing in all of this is we're taking the projections from the beginning of the year, and we're treating them up to the actual budget. So for example, like the Powell bill allocation, we estimate what the state, because that's money that we get from the state, that comes from the gasoline tax, we estimate to the best of our ability and to the best data available, what we're going to get at the beginning of the year, but inevitably, the number is different. So this is just adjusting the budget to actual. But there's no shortage of revenue to cover the expenditures in the current year, which I think is probably what you were looking for. Yeah. Any other questions? And certainly at any point in time, if you have any questions, feel free to call myself or Carrie, and we're happy to answer those.
I'm glad you said the first name, because I'm still stuck on the second and third name, so, okay. All right, any other questions about the financial report? All right, moving along into the consent agenda. The action requested here is to approve consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear motion? Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business, so we'll move along into new business, which item A is consider a watershed high-density development application, McLeod Self-Storage at 104 Tarborough Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the Board, this application, I think we've indicated, staff's indicated to the Board, this will be, I believe, the first watershed permit to come to the Board probably in some time now, at least in probably the last seven or eight years, I think maybe in the last one. And it's coming forward under the ordinance that says it's previously adopted, which is still in effect currently, and the application that was filed predated to current unified development ordinance. So following those particular rules, but essentially, either way, the watershed regulations that apply basically would be the same types of things. Aaron Klinger was not able to be here tonight, so I wasn't feeling that great, but we've got a, in your package, you've probably got a chance to at least skim through this, but I'll get the highlights for you. And also, Harry Mitchell with the Mitchell Design Group, the engineer, is here with us as well to answer any questions about this project, and really, what is this all about? The watershed basically is clearly identified in order to help protect the potential water quality downstream to what could have been a future water intake for Wake Forest. Part of that watershed, and that stream and so forth that feed into that, is within our zoning jurisdiction. This particular area off Tarborough Road, near where the area, including the Dollar General, Gatekeeper, and those types of businesses are in that same area. They, the ordinance does provide an automatic, you can go up to 30% coverage, impervious surface, those things that where water runs off the roofs and pavement and that sort of thing of the site, otherwise keeping the majority of the site still. One of the positive things about having some flexibility with this is that where development is likely to occur, or intensive development, there are provisions that can be done through this particular rule. So you have a higher density recovery site under the 710 rule. All that means is that that area typically the current areas in our waters, also in states, that where the likely higher density of all, the rest of the watershed is supposed to be low against. This particular area, that's all that area is far away, we're resisting, previously developed by local residents, type areas will get, a lot of impact and potential progress of this will pass along. In this package, we've dedicated a little bit of background, but the watershed was located in previous developments, and these here has provided, as we were just requiring, a calculation of 410 acres in that little river area that's been in our description. And that provides with this capability of having 10% of that area covered, and that equation come out with, this is approved, presented with 2.1% which goes more avoidable place in San Jose, which will happen in the future. The area is previously developed, which is on the, there is, we anticipate we're having potential of both of those things. The property package does include the site plans, which are being reviewed for some time now, and with this, with this particular application being considered, the next step is there's still a little conversation with NCDOT about the access problem, the plans that we actually have to affect on review, with any all the requirements, and have to set back, and the other types of things. The recommendation staff is that under the term of the ordinance, there are four criteria which can serve the standards of the Board, to, you know, consider all four of those, three of those actually apply to this situation, the other one as well. Those three basically are on the second page of the memo, and listed as three, A, B, C is not, and D. Just quickly, we gave basically when this development was completed, would lead to be able to possibly reverse that base of the town, development would have been more employee position, putting those construction hours there, to do the planning of this development. And lastly, the system with the official, current, how it's planned, this should be serious, with this, it's consistent with that. So with that in mind, we certainly can ask the technical questions, and certainly make sure that if we're a whole new project, I've said, if we're going to have favorable approval, and if we consider a motion, just to put in regular comments that made, just if it's.
Okay, any questions from the Commissioners to Mr. Clark? Okay, hearing none. So the action requested here is to approve the watershed high-density development application. You want that as a set?
People would like to know, we'd like to approve the request for the, to apply the seventy, high-density option for this, yes, for this application.
So is she getting that? Let me wait for him when he get caught up. You good, Em? Okay, all right. So, again, the action requested here is approve the watershed high-density development application. All of the other commentary from Mr. Clark in regards to three A, B, and D, pardon that, A, B, and D have been entered into the record. So I will entertain a motion to approve. All right, we have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item B is resolution in support of measures to increase the future capacity of the Franklin County Public Utilities local water supply. I believe Mr. Cordero has sent several items. We'll just hit the pause button real quick. Sorry about that. I knew it was about to get loud, so I didn't want to, I didn't want you guys to misinterpret anything that I said. But I believe Mr. Cordero here has sent everyone an email with some of the dire issues that we have facing not only our town, but the county as well, from a water supply situation. So did you have anything that you wanted to add to that prior to adopting the resolution?
I do not. I don't have anything to add, just wanted to make you aware that I did speak with Ms. Angela Harris today about this topic. She's aware that we'll be approving that this evening, and I also plan on sharing this information with the County Board of Commissioners during its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, March 16th.
Okay.
And also wanted to share with you that the town of Franklinton's town manager, Greg Bethia, has indicated to me that they intend to move forward to pass a similar resolution in support of us making a recommendation to the county to move forward on the number of topics that are mentioned in the resolution.
Okay, sounds good. Were there any questions from Commissioners to Mr. Cordero? All right, sounds good. Well, hey, the action I requested here is to adopt the resolution. All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote?
I agree. And the town of Bun, I haven't received confirmation yet, but I anticipate they'll join in as well.
All right, any additional discussion?
I just wanted to say, thanks for all your work on, and you put a lot of effort on this issue. We appreciate it.
Yeah, that's what you pay me to do, I'm happy to do it. Thank you for your appreciation.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, hearing none, we've got a first and a second. All in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. Item C is resolution in support of adopting county zoning in Youngsville's former area of extraterritorial jurisdiction. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, just to let you know that the, we had talked previously about, or via electronic correspondence, that the town's attorney has now successfully secured an injunction in Franklin County Superior Court to continue the town's previous zoning in these areas. So that's been secured. Certainly will be helpful to provide continuity of planning regulations. And as soon as the county adopts its zoning, which is anticipated in the first couple weeks of April, then we'll go back to the court and ask them to make that go away, because it will no longer be necessary. But this is just supporting what the county intends on doing, I believe, on its April 6th meeting.
All right, any questions from the Commissioners to Mr. Cordero? All right, well, the action requested here is to adopt the resolution. I'll open full for motion.
Make a motion.
All right, which one wants the first, which one wants the second? Tie goes to the runner.
Ladies first.
Ladies first, okay, all right. Commissioner, Commissioner Redwood the first.
Commissioner.
You pay on both accounts?
Commissioner Wig is with the second, okay. So we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. And item D is to appoint Carrie Patton-Mottluk, did I say that right? As finance officer?
Perfect.
Okay, good. All right, check that one off the list. Appoint Carrie as finance officer with related authority to co-sign checks. Action requested here is to approve the appointment. All right, we've got a first and a second here. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Reports and other business, I get to go first, being the mayor. Super proud of my adult league basketball team, the Skywalkers. That's why you have this, this is not a modification of my head. I know a lot of people thought that with all the shining going on, that it was, it was a statue. It's not shining. Oh, that was good. But yeah, so the, us old timers got out there and did it on the basketball court and had a good time doing it. The birthday boy here, Mr. Smith, scored, I believe, a career high and knocked down many, many, many three pointers. And our ace reporter in the background over there did some damage as well. So very proud of that accomplishment. I definitely, you know, with coronavirus and everything going on, it's a little bit of a scary scenario with a lot of sports being canceled, there's going to be a lot of kids that don't have after-school activities and things like that. So I'm glad that we were able to get that in. I'm coaching girls soccer at Cedar Creek Middle School, and we found out today that the season's been basically postponed for a while. I know our All-Stars are struggling through that as well. So hopefully, with what Commissioner Headland said earlier, this can be remedied very quickly, because it's going to be, I think it's going to be some stress on the supply chain and a lot of other things. So anyhow, everybody around here, stay safe. And then I will yield my time to Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, sir. Just a few notes. First, I appreciate your comments, Ms. Powell, on Nassau. Just wanted to let you know that we have, through a variety of, a variety of efforts, tried to tell Google to close that street on Google Maps. I say that because I know that a lot of people use Google Maps as a way to get around town, and a lot of people that are not familiar. And from the research that I've done, it usually takes between 15 and 30 days for them to kind of take a look at those things. But just to let you know, we've tried to, you know, do additional things, so for people that do use Google Maps, to let them know that that's closed, and it won't route them through there. And then also, I think that as time passes, you know, more people will commute in that area and realize that it is closed. But I appreciate your comments. Also wanted to say that the, the new town hall building, we discussed this previously, and I'll give a little bit more information about this during our work session on the 19th. But our plan is to refinance the old town hall building and build a new public works facility, and then also finish the rest of the old town hall building. We plan on adding some additional office spaces, and then also turning that kind of back area into a new meeting space for the Board that will have more modern facilities. Not that this area doesn't have a lot of character, and that, you know, not that I don't love this building, but I think that it would provide a lot, a lot of additional resources to provide training for the police department, et cetera. So we're moving forward on that, on that end, and then we're also have an engineer that's been retained to develop a site plan for the public works facility that will be on South College Street, near the pump station there, kind of near the cemetery, and that'll be used to maintain town vehicles and do others, the sorts of things of that nature. Just wanted to provide you a brief update on that. The community house is set to be renovated, at least the bathroom and the doors, a couple other things are going to be renovated, April 10th to the 17th. So that's when the contractor will be here, just so everybody's aware. I do have a meeting scheduled with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on Monday, the 16th. I believe Commissioners Bream and Headland will be joining me, and we plan to discuss a variety of topics. Just to kind of review our agenda, we're going to be discussing the town's downtown improvement project, which will be taking place this fall, hopefully bidding that in June, and also installation of the protected left-turn signal that happened recently at Cross and Main, and the continual improvement of that timing of that signal, especially in connection with the signal at Five Points intersection. We'll also be We'll also be discussing lengthening, there's a right turn lane across Main as you're coming northbound on Highway 96 to take a right. There is a little right turn lane there, but we'd like to widen that if possible, so we'll discuss that. Also, at one point, there was a traffic circle on DOT schedule that was not funded for the Five Points intersection, we'll discuss that as well. Let's see, we'll discuss the topic of the Crosstown Boulevard that is on the town's featured land use map that was prepared, and any potential participation by DOT in that. And then we'll also discuss some potential improvements that might be planned for the Main Street and/or Tarborough Road and Cedar Creek Drive as you turn left there. I know there's a lot of people that have commented on that, and that being an inefficient intersection, so we might be able to re-time that signal or make additional improvements to it. That's all I have.
Alright.
Do I have any questions on any of that? Yes, ma'am. There's no current plans, conceptual or otherwise, for that. I do intend to bring that topic up for discussion on March 16th when I'm meeting with NC DOT, and I'll certainly provide this board an update at their next meeting in April. But thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Commissioner Redd? Alright, Commissioner Hedlund?
First of all, the road was just like Silvio from the Supremacy. I was out when they brought it in. The Woods Club Lunch is postponed until fall because of the virus and everything, don't know right now. A lot of elderly people that work here and then attended. So, it's going to happen, it's going to happen. We cleaned a lot of roads lately. One lane was cleaned by Keith and Dee helping. The town staff helped clean up some of the roads on Holden and also Park Avenue. The We Serve Group cleaned up South Cross Street. Scott and Jim Moss cleaned up 96. Also, we have a lot of empty bags of dirt that we picked up in the last week or so. So, I just wanted to thank Scott, thank you, Dee, thank you, and thank you to the We Serve group. We have like six of them here, but I appreciate it. So it looks better. September 26th is the Fall Festival car show, that's Saturday. And that's all I have.
Alright. Okay, alright, Commissioner Wiggins? Alright, Commissioner Johnson? And Commissioner Bream?
So I attended the Campo meeting on February 19th and got a few items to share from that. The Northeast Area Study, which took place, I believe it was 2015, it's time to renew that study. So Brandon Watson from, with Campo is going to be heading that up, and said it should be starting soon. I don't know if he's already reached out to town staff or not, but the indication was that that would start up soon. Members at Campo emphasized the importance of completing the 2020 census. So they communicated that in accordance to us and recommended that we promote that within our town. You know, different ways you could do it, Facebook, mailings, the utility bills, just include something on there. They indicated that it was basically like $16 per person, I'm sorry, $1,600 per person loss in not completing the census. So for every resident that we have that does not complete the census, we lose $1,600.
In like future federal funding? Yeah.
And then I've got the next Campo meeting next week, so I will report back when I hear from there. That's all.
Alright, thank you to Commissioner Bream. And we'll move to planning and zoning. Ms. Klinger's not here, so Mr. Clark, did you have anything to add on her behalf?
Just a very few things. I think Phil has indicated some, going to cover, but basically that Aaron was able to meet with Shelby Powell and with Brandon Watson about the Crosstown Boulevard and trying to look at that proper dance in terms of some layout, which will be more information coming to the board later on that. And also with regard to Wake Forest and some of the plans they have for traffic to the north of them, and how that kind of fits together with, in many ways, with the concepts we have on our current plan. So, and that's a positive conversation, and any development, again, taking place along any of those potential corridors there or anywhere else where we have any adopted plans. Certainly want to make sure that those developers, you know, work with those particular plans included in their proposals. We are certainly waiting for, you know, official approvals of any water allocations to the half dozen or more local projects, which we're certainly looking forward to. And I know that means coming up with the commissioners soon. But we have currently, right now, just so the boards aware, if you may be aware of this, Hampton Village Apartments Phase 3 on North, on 96 of Wolfbeck Lane. Washington Manor, this is on Shell College Street. Aaron Pond, which has a search property. He's prepared a lot of stuff. He advised me that he gave us. It's going to be something that we sort of hope has approved. And the Ambassador Woods Phase 7, that's the last section that's up briefly, which is a seasonal program back to back. And that is, she's been, not, hopefully, with approval. But then we're waiting for decisions on projects through Parkville Commons and Gulf Steph Cross Highway 1, which was approved now, approved. So there are a number of projects, I'm sure that, actually, it's going to work on the local system. It was done. Also, we're in the final review of the two blocks developed. The two blocks established, I think, right now, probably very, 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 thank for fire problem sign off, I think, cost really very big. Thanks also for those new blocks.
I just wanted to add, kind of reiterate Commissioner Bream's comments about the Northeast Area Study. That's kind of just a general study about the area, how it was going to progress, and it'll inform, you know, decisions that DOT makes and other municipalities and the county make as far as, you know, building new roads, things of that nature. There's going to be a website that the consultant's going to create as a part of that process, and so we'll certainly share that with you and link it via the town's website when that's up. And then also, if there's any board members that are interested in participating in key leader meetings or stakeholder meetings as part of that process, certainly let me know, whether, you know, the mayor or Commissioner Bream or anyone else. We can certainly allow you to facilitate you attending those meetings. I think it would be important to have a voice there. Aaron will provide periodic updates to the board, and I'm sure Commissioner Bream will as well, as that process unfolds. That's all I have.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Clark? Alright, hearing none, we'll go with our town attorney, Mr. Bartholomew. Clearly, we get a discount though, right? Just making sure, okay.
I was at a conference appointment in the better of that.
Ooh.
I apologize, my card is. Otherwise, I wanted to remind the board that I would be out once a week or a month. The birth of my first child. So, I will be back, hopefully in time to meet you at that point. If you have any issues there. I did get to go to the U.S.C. meeting, the Southern Allocation Committee meeting, where, or there, made some decisions that he gets, like, in his county. And I think we may be able to work with some of the developers about, what is a commercial property versus what's a residential property? There's a lot more allocation to it for the commercial cell property than there is for residential cell property. So if possible, we could work with pre-classification quarters that are potentially get allocation, whether or not like that. That may be a way to sort of, in that development, much faster manner of discernment. So, I've really been working at Cordero's attorneys he tried to get with. I'm going to turn on a couple of issues that he put forward, including water issue, as well as the street fetish. So, I have a count, but we've been inside of pairs here in our town. It will be required to bring street back to a lot of those before they've done. Or that, open there. Any other questions? Did you ever know where the foot was up?
We did, yes. Thank you.
Any questions about that?
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Chief Willey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I get into my report, I think it bears mentioning that I've received an email from a L.O.G. in Wake County. They're hoping up there to receive in response to the coronavirus outbreak in case of the pandemic out there. And it looks like they're moving into public service potential for the next 30 days. Like I say, while that isn't a regular, but that's the current community. And they have partnerships we have. Like I said, I wanted to mention. Calls for service for the month of February, we received 354 calls for service as compared to 283 same month last year. Of those 22 reports were written and 93 citations issued. With significant, as many of you already know, February 5th, if you want to see it was prioritized by students as of now unidentified persons that didn't take anything, want to see it enter the front door there and reviewing the video, and hears that whatever type of narcotic they were trying to put their hands on, they didn't locate due to the practices, the conversations that I have with them, some creative rearrangement of this narcotic, some even someone that kept a secure facility in this credit, just to find what they're looking for. But we're working to Apex and Carrie on this case. They have similar incidents with similar timeframe suspects and actual disappearances. They did actually walk away with it and be in a couple of other narcotics from those cases. Other than collisions, reported eight here in March of February this year, and reported eight through the same month last year. Unfortunately, while I was listening to the load, I won't agree to one item. I was just having to report. Unfortunately, there were no significant injuries associated with those collisions. While I've been there, unfortunately, long enough, and are just a little superstitious just enough, I will say I will contribute it to the loaders correctly as of late, because of the short times since they've been closed. But fortunately, haven't had any collisions at Nassau or in the surrounding areas we can correct and contribute to those closures or to that new turn. And if you recall, the months leading up to those closures, we were saying we didn't do much. So, it does appear that we are having some success with those closures. The weekday traffic assignment, we've been out across the main, hopefully we've seen some of our officers out there in the morning, redirecting traffic as necessary to efficiently install and protect the Green Arrow. So we have, we've discontinued that effort. However, we are moving down to the, to the, to the, to the turn, we're slammed, and we'll be addressing that. We take it on as we do with most operations that, you know, are not significant, don't have significant impacts, immediate impacts on public safety. Where we can is an informative public information campaign. We did that over the course of last week. But in the weeks to follow, we probably take it more aggressive and do force reaction as necessary to both continue in this regard, that turn here. And speaking of Google, as of yesterday, I know the closure was in place on Nassau. I just plugged it in, I had the sense going through town. Couldn't stay, hope that that dealt with some of the turn rates. Community policing efforts, call for the cop. We pre-scheduled, just attended the March 6th, call for the cop. And the polar plunge recently, we get a report back from administrative assistant of Low Mac to find out what the results were that the town estimated time to begin a report and the federal run on board. As of now, operation underground railroad has been notified and have publicized that run, and we're waiting to see what kind of numbers come up as far as the file numbers for that run, figure out what the further allocations. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you for that, Chief Willey. Any questions from the commissioners? Alright, moving along, Assistant Chief Graney is not here. He did send me a note that said that he will not be here. He's still at work, believe it or not, dealing with coronavirus issues. The only thing that he has that he wanted me to speak into existence is their awards ceremony is March 28th at 4:00 P.M. at Faith Baptist Church. All town officials and staff are invited to attend. And moving along into parks and recreation, Mr. Smith?
Last night concluded all of our rec basketball, so it was a great adult season for some of us. And again, thank you to Faith Baptist, and as always, the Franklin County Schools as well for letting us use their gyms. We definitely could not have done it without two gyms this year, and potentially we'll have to look into a third next year, which would be a really exciting opportunity. Baseball registration ends tomorrow, as does adult kickball. Baseball is higher than it was last spring, so we're almost maxed out there. We'll have someone on every field, every day, at every hour. So, that's a pretty great sign. Kickball seems to be doing well. We're looking forward to another season there. Also, if you ever have time, come out and play pickleball with us. We're normally playing on Sunday, every Sunday afternoon. Mayor Flowers and myself and a couple of our friends and wives go out and play. There is a train behind me right now.
They're not observing the noise ordinance, by the way.
They're not, they're not.
Yeah.
So we got USAPA certified, United States of America Pickleball Association certified recently. So there'll be a nice sign that's on its way from the USAPA to hang up there. And we now have an official pickleball ambassador. And they will be doing a free clinic on April, Monday, April 6th, from 8:30 to 10:30. It's capped at 10 people of any age. The paddles and balls will be provided, so if you want to come out and learn about pickleball, it'll be there on the 6th of April, so.
How do you sign up for that?
Same, just on the online website that you would for the youth sports and adult sports. So, other than that, that's what we got going on now. Oh, as Mayor Flowers mentioned earlier, the SWAC basketball tournament has temporarily been postponed. Our 12 U girls were supposed to be playing in Wendell tonight, so hopefully that'll get rescheduled sooner rather than later. So, other than that, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
Was just that, so you, you're on that board.
I am. Yes, sir. We are still planning on going ahead with that. If anything, a decision would be made within 24 to 48 hours ahead of time. And then we also implemented a rain-out plan today that would be then held inside at Faith Baptist.
Alright, any additional questions for Mr. Smith? Alright, hearing none, we'll move along to our town clerk, Ms. Hurd? Speak into the mic one more time. We've got battery issues.
Ooh, wow. As we were speaking about the water allocation earlier, one of the side effects is that the annexation petition we received a few months ago, they requested it be put on hold because they did not receive their allocation. So, once they appeal the process and we move forward, they may come back and either resubmit or just reactivate their annexation petition. But right now, that's just going to be on hold for the next few months.
Alright, anything else? As we shift the microphone back into place? Okay, any updates for maintenance? Okay, any updates for maintenance?
Nothing significant for maintenance to report. I would just make another comment that your next meeting is a week from today at Town Hall on March 19th, 7:00 PM. That'll be a budget workshop, we'll just talk about next year's budget.
We think those guys will speak.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
That's March 19th, right?
Yes, sir. Correct, at Town Hall, not in this building. We try to keep you on your toes.
I gotta go that way, I gotta go this way, I gotta go this, okay. Alright, well, that sounds good and I know they're probably looking forward to having their own location with their maintenance shop. I would imagine that Town Hall staff, as well as the PD, would be happy to get some of those big trucks away from our current Town Hall, so we can actually park some vehicles there, so that'll be outstanding. Alright, no need to go into closed session, so this meeting is adjourned.